I just turned to six o'clock, probably everybody else did. Also, so we have everybody here.
Just missing our student rap.
The student rap, okay. So then, um, we have approval of the agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion from Cheryl, a second from Jake. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried. Anybody here for public comment? And then, we're on the consent agenda. Um, actually, um, we've got the minutes. Should we do Cheryl's?
Sure.
Cheryl, will you talk about the bills and wire transfer?
Okay, um, I went in and checked on the bills and, um, a lot of upgrades and, and painting and new, uh, furniture and things going in. Um, the construction costs are coming in. Um, other than that, it's pretty much everything that's been spoken of before. They worked on the courtyards, put some new plantings in, I believe.
Some landscape brick and stuff.
Fixed them up.
Yep.
Corrected things.
Clean them up.
But everything was pretty much as normal, just those were things I noted.
Okay, and then, personal items. Matt, can I hand that to you?
Yep. Um, so first of all, let's talk about the activity advisor list. It's, uh, that's the sheet that I have at your table. My error on this, but I did not link it, and so I just want to go through this with everybody. Things are a little different this year in many ways, and one of them is the coaches and advising. Typically, we would be approving the fall, coaches and advisors and the year-long assignments. What I'm asking the board to do this evening is to consider just approving all of these. So I just want to run through, we'll work left to right on this list. So the fall, obviously, yes, we need to get that approved. The year-long assignments, we also need to get that approved tonight as well. The winter, you would be able to hold off if you wanted to. If you go to spring one, all of the football and all of the volleyball that's at the high school level needs to be approved tonight because they now have practice seasons. You could hold off on junior high football and junior high volleyball if you wish. And then if you go to spring two, all of these seasons that got their season canceled last spring also now have practice, um, contact times. So that means baseball, softball, golf, track, all of those would, I would advise having all those people under contract. You could hold off on track. So if you're looking at this list, I've circled the three you could wait on. You could wait on junior high football, you could wait on junior high volleyball, and you could wait on track. And then you could wait on everything in the winter column. My recommendation to the board would be to approve these assignments as they are right now. That doesn't preclude anybody from, um, uh, still being able to resign if something comes up, if they need to take a leave, that they still have that option and possibility. But given how all of this is working and the amount of what was spring is now going to be happening in fall, I think it would give a lot of people some clarity if we simply approve these this evening. Thoughts by the board?
We have no idea what's coming on, thanks. Does this basically set everything in stone? We have no idea. What if we get the wintertime and it's all shut down for the whole winter? And then, we've already occupied the spring, and so when could these kids play anyway then? So if we lock ourselves in, are we locked in on those contracts or?
Minus personal conflict or whatever.
Right. So she says if we approve this tonight, then the head coaches for basketball, what happens if this season doesn't take place? Are we under obligation then? They've been hired and?
Yes, with, there's a contract in place. Now, I think if that happens, I believe you're going to hear the same conversation that we heard last spring. The conversation we heard last spring is you are receiving your full aid. The expectation is that you're going to be honoring those contracts. I believe that will be the same conversation that, that will happen. The other thing that I would just be very careful of right now, um, whether it's our winter sports or our spring sports or our fall sports, those head coaches have already, all of them, since the first of July and, and before that, have been busy, um, doing things to promote their activity and work with kids and athletes and, and participants in their activity. So, I mean, there, there is already a lot of hours put into these assignments. I just want to make sure that the board understands that these aren't static assignments, that football only happens from the second Monday in August until the Thanksgiving weekend. There's, there's more things going on, and that's the same with baseball and softball and basketball. You name it, they're all, um, yes, they have a season, but they have other things they're doing as well.
Is this kind of what is being recommended from most districts? Is this kind of how they're handling it in this?
This is the first district that I've worked in that approved them, um, prior to each season. Every place that I've worked, they approve them usually in July or August. They approve all the advising and coaching for the entire academic year. So I've never worked in a district where this comes back to the board every three months and the board needs to do, take action again. That being said, I've also worked in districts that have done this, and then, um, due to lack of numbers or due to whatever unforeseen circumstance, they haven't had a sport and they have been able to get out of this contract.
So basically, you're saying that if we did this and all of a sudden we get to the winter and all the sports are shut down for the winter, it would basically make this contract, what we're doing tonight invalid? Because us shutting it down isn't of our control either, no different than anybody else.
So they couldn't fulfill their contract, so the contract is void.
Yeah, I think, I think the bigger question is really the flip side of that coin. I see the more likely scenario being winter gets shut down. I see the message being delivered to school districts loud and clear. You are getting your full funding, you are expected to be paying out your, your, um?
Like they did in the spring.
Like they did in the spring. That's, that's the scenario I see happening, um, sooner than, than the other one.
Right, and I hope that happens, like you said, coaches put in way more time than their actual season, and so I think, I, I hope that is the case.
So just to clarify, did I hear you say that, like, the spring sports, baseball, softball, they will be able to practice in the fall?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let Max answer that, that one specifically, but any sport that got canceled last spring, they have a certain window and a quantity of times that they can interact with their athletes because of that, that canceled season. So yes, they all are going to be having opportunities. Now, how we will run that here, for instance, we have Chris Wolf who's a head cross-country and head track. That might, you know, look different, but all of those activities that got canceled in the fall will have contact time.
I guess I know that they get 12 days for football, volleyball, I don't know what they could, but somehow this is going to have to be laid out so that kids who do multiple sports is not going to be overlapped or anything. So I just want to clarify that.
Yep. Do you want to talk to, about the specifics of those contact times, Max?
Yeah, I can do that right now. So volleyball and football have, have a contact period from September 14th to October, um, 3rd. And then baseball, softball, track and golf have October 5th to October 23rd. And within those timeframes, you're allowed 12 practices and a meeting, um, in addition to that as far as where you can have a preseason meeting or handout equipment or any of that kind of stuff. I think in, in terms of the winter, nobody knows what's going to happen. I do think it's fairly safe to bet that if we're, as long as we have some sort of in-person or hybrid, even if they're, even if the activities aren't allowed, you're going to see somewhat of a similar scenario play out in the winter sports where they're potentially going to have some kind of modified practice season as well. And, and the purpose for doing that is because they want the, uh, coaches and athletes and, uh, teams to be able to interact for, um, so you, so it just doesn't become a void in those student-athletes lives for those periods of time when they're used to having that connection with an adult in some way, shape or form, or teammates or so forth. I can't, obviously, I can't say what's going to happen, as none of us can in this room, but I think from a winter standpoint, it's safe to say that that's an avenue that high school league's looking at.
Okay. Do you want me to run down the other lists of, of personnel things?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so Rachel Brown, school nurse, has put in for a, um, leave of absence. Stephanie Good, a para, is resigning. New, um, instrumental music is Nick Flatam and, um, Kim Jones is a targeted services hours, that one I think you've seen in the past. Alyssa Kelly is a new hire, a special education teacher. Adwa Laura is putting in for a short leave of absence. Megan Matt is the new clerical person at the elementary school. We have Brad Skoulin coming back to help supervise playground and recess and, uh, some, some lunches. Betty Schmidt is a pair at the elementary school who has submitted resignation. Sue Tightshirt, her hours there are associated with targeted services. Jill Urbanski has put in the letter of resignation, and then Jen Wirs, her hours are also related to targeted services hours. Uh, the board will also see one more targeted services hour where it's coming in September, and that's for Maria Rasmussen here in the secondary building, but that'll be at the September meeting. So.
Um, I did have a question for the activities. We have some new hires in there. Do we want to mention who they are?
Yeah, I think I can, can run through these and, and get them all, and Max, if, if you want to, um, assist, that would be great.
I can probably take them off the top of my head.
There you go. Do you want a sheet?
I think I will, yeah. So for in the fall, we did switch those seasons, it was fairly short notice. We had two, uh, junior high coaches, baseball and softball, whose schedules weren't, um, going to allow for them to be able to come back. We had Brad Skoulin and Tim Whaler, who are head coaches in those respective sports, express interest and step up and fill those positions. To my knowledge, in the winter, anything that's, um, well, we'd have girls' basketball, JV girls' basketball, and ninth grade girls' basketball, JV assistant girls, Brad Skoulin and ninth grade, uh, Kami Maher. And, uh, wrestling, the head, of course, girls' basketball head coach and wrestling head coach have been approved already. Then wrestling, um, myself moving from junior high position to assistant wrestling, and Tracy Peepenberg, junior high wrestling. Don't believe there should be any other changes on there unless I miss something.
The only other one that is, uh, of note for the board is we will probably still be looking for one junior high girls' basketball coach that is a, that has a TBD.
And, and the reason for that is that Brad Skoulin was in that position, so.
And then the other, the other one too is the speech.
The jazz band.
One, um, the, say that again, Maggie?
And jazz band.
Uh, jazz band should be Nick.
Right, but he's a new hire.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Obviously, Nick Flatam is the new instrumental music, and so he is, um, as far as both the middle school and high school jazz band advisor as well.
Thank you.
It's a, I think maybe we are all kind of wondering, a perception here. I'm thinking if the governor, they're going to tell us the, like he did before for winter season, he's going to tell us yea or nay anyway. And we don't really have much choice other than to do what they say.
Correct.
So if we would just accept this consent agenda, the assumption would be we're going to get back to somewhat of normal. I mean, from the kid's standpoint, we need to get, uh, back on track. We may be held up for some time, but we would just need a motion to accept the, uh, accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Cheryl, I have a second from Rick. Any further discussion?
I do have two questions, um, just related to like, when it comes to like jazz bands, since they're not Minnesota State High School League, correct? When do we get to make those decisions? Are those decisions already made on if those, or are we kind of waiting and seeing?
So there's a couple of, of things there, and again, I think Max can clarify this. So, um, musical contest is governed by Minnesota State High School League.
Even jazz band?
Our jazz band is a separate program that we've offered that our jazz, or our instrumental music instructor offered in the mornings for school as an additional program that a student could join and get. And then they would, and you'd be at the concerts, you'd see that the jazz portion would play some extra songs and things like that, and do some performances that's not necessarily tied into the instrumental music contest that the state high school league offers.
So do we get to make the decision on that then? And if so, is there any timeline, or is it kind of like, we'll wait and see how things go?
As far as if we're going to have jazz band? Well, I think the conversation that the administrative team's had along, as, as long as we can allow things to happen within the MDAH and CDC guidance that they're giving us, we're going to allow that. So if we can, if we can have jazz band in our building, uh, it has nothing to do with going to other schools. We're not going to do any, any contests per se outside of it. There'd be nothing that I would be recommending, and I think I can speak for David the same, that would say that we shouldn't be having jazz band, um, along with any of these other activities as long as the guidance allows for us to be able to do it.
Okay.
Correct, 100% correct, yep.
Perfect. And then the other question was with, um, Rachel Brown's leave of absent, what is, what are we doing to fill in?
So we have a sub coming in.
Just as, okay, perfect, that's what.
Yep, the sub will cover, um, that leave. And then we also have our, um, nurse assistant who's, who's on site every day when students are here as well. So it'll be the, the sub and the nursing assistant are the two that.
Just a long-term, so, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried. So, Matt, you're next.
All right, so this is, uh, the time where we are going to go and get a look at the, the CTE space. So let's go, uh, John will be our tour guide.
Here's Walt.
So we've done nothing with the family passes at this point in time because, for instance, we have nothing that we can charge people for, um,
Good point.
in the fall. So I didn't even look to see if that's an option on the store, to be honest with you. But it's something that we certainly, um, can make available on there. As a fee. And then, um, yeah, when we get into the activities, you can see we have our full year activities and the fall activities, we've added baseball, junior high up to the top. Um, I'm not sure, Katie, when you sent this out, do they get, if I update this on, is, is the link they have the one that I'm operating on, or it's separate? So, so the one that I have right here, I actually have the junior high baseball schedules live on there. So like, I don't know if you, you probably, it says scheduled TBD, but as we complete those things, generally at this time, I would have every activity scheduled built. I am not publishing any of the schedules at this point in time. I've gotten very few questions on it because I think people understand that. Partially because I think it's very safe to say in the event that we have any winter activities, they're going to be shortened by that 70% threshold that the high school league looked at when they shortened all the other activities down, they reduced them by that much. So, so we're pretty certain that whatever happens, we're going to be rebuilding those schedules. And so just don't really feel comfortable publishing any of that stuff at this time. So it's just, uh, to be determined. I obviously have them built on the backend, I can publish them at any time if need be. So we have boys and girls cross-country and their football, we've adjusted some of the language to talk about and just to try to get the, um, the dates of practice schedules and also working with some of the other, so, um, softball, junior highs on there as well. And then you see the line, fall practice schedules for nine through 12 baseball, seven through 12 golf, nine through 12 softball, seven through 12 track and field, and nine and 12 volleyball are to be determined because they really are. We didn't, I'm waiting on coaching staffs yet to have a finalized plan of what they're going to do. Again, volleyball is the only one that can start on September 14th besides football, and so the rest of those can't go until October. So they do have a little bit of time and, and it's new. And if you think about trying to figure out, what are you going to do for, um, a seventh through 12th grade golf practice in October, it might not, it's, it's brand new. They're trying to figure some of that stuff out, so. Winter activities, you can see that, I guess, I covered it a little bit, but schedules are expected to change and we'll link those schedules when we get guidance from the high school league on what's going to take place. Same thing on the, um, on the website, on the Central Minnesota Conference or our school website is the same, so. And then the spring sports have been adjusted down before. And I think somebody had a question into Katie as far as they had issues on, um, clicking the hyperlinks of individuals to create the emails. And I'm not sure if, uh, if it was the case. I'm pretty sure it used to be where if you'd just click it, whatever, um, email, uh, solution you were using on your computer would just populate an email to that person. For those of you who are interested, if you click on somebody and then you see it says send to that person, if you, you then have to put your cursor over the top of that email address and you'll get an option, and then you can click on that email envelope and it will then create that email. I'm not sure why they added that extra step, um, but, but in addition, you could click on the calendar and try to schedule a meeting with somebody or something, if that's the mode that people use. But, um, I'm not sure who had that question, but essentially that's linked in there. Rather than type the person's name and their email and their contact information, they can get that by clicking on the link. Um, it used to be when you click on that, I believe it would just populate that email, which doesn't happen any longer.
And for me, it just brings you to the top of the document.
Yeah.
Like it doesn't give you the option, that was my question, like it doesn't, it's not hyperlink to anything, it just brings, it pops you to the top. So it looks like a hyperlink, but it's.
So if I'm on here, I'm just on any of them, clicking on Ben Burgertin under the early spring activities. I click on Ben, see the, this link, and then when I put my cursor over there, it brings up a picture of Ben, his email address, which, um, which I can click the envelope right here to.
Are you in, uh, in Google? So if you're just viewing the PDF in the PDF pane, you have to download the PDF. Once you download the PDF, then those links will work.
Perfect.
Okay.
That makes sense, I was like, not working for me, I don't know. Yes. Makes sense.
I did have to ask Eric about that though, because I'm like, help me out, Eric. I've linked plenty of things in the past and they're there, so. I think for the most part, that highlights any of the, the changes. Again, a vast majority of this is, is due to what we're facing with COVID-19, so.
Though they changed the 504 coordinator on this one to Storiflex. Is that you or is that?
Should be Kristy Zimmer.
Okay.
I think it's on there, right?
It is.
Yeah.
In some documents, it's you, that's why I would, perfect.
So basically, on this one along with the rest of them, we're improving as best we can at this point in time with a, a year that everything could be shifting all over the place.
Yes.
So, any other conversation about that? Otherwise, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Make motion.
Second.
A motion from Thomas, second from Jake, uh, to improve the 20, uh, 21 extracurricular activities handbook. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried. Matt, I think I'm with you now on this next one.
Okay.
The learning model.
Yep, the next item is this, uh, learning model resolution. So essentially, um, MSBA has recommended that the Board of Education determine how school will start in each school district. So if you would scroll down to, therefore be it resolved, um, it would be in section two. The learning model selected, um, ew, excuse me, I lost my place. Section one. The superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following-based learning model for 2021, in-person learning for elementary students and hybrid learning for secondary students. So that is where we would start. That is what the conversation here has been for the last, um, three and a half weeks or so. And that is the model that, that I would recommend we start with.
So then every time that changes, does a new one have to be adopted? Or is this just gives you the authority?
Nope. So then, it's section two, then it talks about the superintendent is authorized after consulting with the board chair and, and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model. So essentially, if we have to change, I will be letting you know of that change.
But we don't have to approve.
But I will not be bringing back a new resolution every time that we need to, uh, to make a change. Yeah, any other questions with this?
So do we have a motion to approve? So a motion from Jake, second by Maggie.
We do need a roll call.
Roll call.
Never mind.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then we're ready for a roll call.
Ashley?
Um, yes.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, carried. So then, um, we have the face covering policy 808.
Let me just get mine open here and then we'll talk about it. Uh, so this is the, uh, taking the recommended MSBA policy. Executive Order 2082 is the one that governs, um, face coverings and that requirement. It is also, uh, I believe the actual executive order regarding face covers is 2081. But 2082 is the one that pertains to, um, the, the, um, opening of schools and stuff, and that's where they actually put language in there, um, regarding five-year-olds. And if you're in kindergarten, the expectation is you would have a face, uh, covering. If you're not, um, that would be an exempt population. So that's why it says Executive Order 2082. There's been, uh, the definitions, you can see a disposable mask, works cloth mask, scarf, neck gator, bandana, religious, uh, face covering is fine, medical-grade masks and respirators are fine. I don't know if you have read the, the news lately, but there's a big study about neck gators. I know there are some places that now are saying neck gators aren't okay. I was on a call with the Minnesota Department of Health where superintendent specifically asked the Department of Health representatives about that piece and if we should be expecting in the coming weeks that they're going to remove neck gators. They have assured us up to this point that no, they are going to leave neck gators in. I think there's some disagreement in the, the scientific and medical world as far as what the purpose of that study, study about neck gators was and how it was interpreted and how that newspaper article was written about it. So we're leaving it in there. As far as I'm concerned, it is going to be fine. If that is something that works for people, um, we want to leave it in there as an option. The other thing that's very clear is, uh, face coverings will be treated just like any other article of clothing, so they need to be school-appropriate. You know, anything else that you would wear, if you wore a sweatshirt that had, uh, certain items or logos on it, would probably be issues at school that will continue and will apply to face coverings. The school district is paying for a face mask for all students, a cloth face mask that can be washed and reused. Uh, we also have a, um, pretty good supply of disposable face masks that we will start the year with. We also have face shields available for all employees. We'll have an option if a mask doesn't work, but a face shield would, would be, um, appropriate. And we will also be working with, uh, students and families that potentially may benefit from a face shield versus a face mask, um, as well. Otherwise, the, the implementation of this is, it's the expectation that, um, our students are going to follow the executive order. That is ultimately what this, um, mask policy is, is the. Questions on it?
Just a quick one on the, the face shields. Last night you explained that a little more for, I think there was a question last night on, um, if the teachers are going to be masked and all that. Can you go and, I think your explanation might be a little better.
Yeah, so, so I've, and I've received that question multiple times. The question is, are, are teachers required to wear a face mask all the time? The executive order specifically has language about that and it says, no, they are not. There are certain, um, teachers in certain content areas where it would be almost impossible to teach a new academic skill in a content area with a face mask on. The two examples that I used last night were, for instance, our speech-language clinicians. When you're trying to teach a child an appropriate articulation of a sound, When you're trying to teach a child an appropriate articulation of a sound, they need to be able to see your face, to see what muscles you're using to make that sound and to mimic it to reproduce it. Obviously, you can't teach that with a cloth mask on your face. The other one at the secondary level that would be a no-brainer in my mind is our foreign language teachers. It would be very, very difficult to try to teach students new sounds of a foreign language if they can't see how your face is actually working to replicate a sound. So our teachers are going to have flexibility. What we are going to work with them on is that the expectation is it's one or the other. If you're not going to wear a shield, then the expectation is you have a face mask on or like I have. If that doesn't work, then the expectation is that you're going to put a face shield on. There has been some conversation, and I think it might have been misinterpreted a little bit. I think there was some recommendation that a face shield by itself isn't good enough. You need a mask and a shield. That is not accurate. I have clarified that with the Department of Health. They are clear that a face shield isn't as protective as a mask is, but they also understand in the examples I used that absolutely they would one hundred percent endorse those instructors using a face shield without a mask.
Okay, any other conversation on this? If not, we could entertain a motion to approve the face mask covering policy 808.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion from Maggie, second from Jake. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried.
Can I ask a question related, I don't know where I'd ask it. So my curiosity is, for the students who are doing distance learning and a teacher and if it's a synchronous time, do we have technology? Are they going to be mic'd or how do we ensure that those students can hear? Or during those time periods, do you think a teacher will probably be in front of the computer? Because I was just randomly thought of like, how do we have the technologies to make sure that, you know, if they're in a synchronous class, that they can hear what the teacher is saying if the teacher isn't right there? Like, do we have microphones or how does that?
Yeah, so I believe most of what our model will be for remote learning will be a flipped model.
Okay.
Which is very different than what was going on in the spring.
Okay.
Those that are, were unhappy with the spring distance learning, that is not what our remote learning is going to be this fall. But yes, most of our teachers are intending to be able to instruct in a remote process through a flipped model of being able to record those snippets of video and content that they need people to review prior to new instruction.
Article.
Now, we do have some teachers that have been tinkering with Bluetooth speakers and some other things as well. So I'm not going to say that that's the only way this is going to get rolled out, but I know that there's been a significant number of teachers that are talking about using a flipped model. And that flipped model can be used with people in person as easily as it can be used with people remotely.
So that's what we use is like an attached cord microphone? Because when you're trying to conduct a meeting and, yeah. So I was just curious if we have that technology or if that's.
Yep.
Okay, we are then on the 2124 Superintendent Contract. Everybody got a chance to look at that, I'm assuming? If any, there was three of us on the committee. If other committee members have any comments on it, I think I'll speak for myself. We're very happy with how that went. I felt it was a lot more of a continuation of where we were going from the first one. And Matt was very comfortable with how that went. We had a really nice discussion. So any?
Yeah, I'd agree. It was relatively, it was good conversation regarding the past and the future, and I think we're on that same page and Matt came to the table with realistic expectations and we were able to discuss those with those and put together a good contract.
It didn't take very long to negotiate. It just, we were on the same page and anything that needed to be discussed and hashed out was very easily, we very easily came to terms. It just was an easy extension of the existing contract.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to approve the 2124 Superintendent Contract.
Will move.
As presented, a motion from Rick.
A second.
A second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried. Okay, site survey information. Matt, we're back with you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get something to come up here and I'm struggling. Give me just a minute, please.
We're getting all used to the technology. We're good.
I apologize. My intention was to put the image behind you and it's now working. So we need to continue moving along with some long-term planning stuff. And part of the long-term planning is to get the softball fields flipped and be able to get some sort of like a grandstand structure that's going to be able to serve the softball fields, but also potentially be able to serve like the football and track and a whole host of events that go on out in our athletic field. In order to do that, the first step is to actually get the rest of that property surveyed. And I should have had this completed when we did the site survey for the facility project. I should have just added to all of our acreage. I didn't. And so they included roughly about if you have the softball field that's closest to our building, they have surveyed about half of that field. They've not done anything that you get closer to Burr Street, so further from the building and all the way over to the street. So I have a gentleman coming out who has experience with doing athletic complexes and he, of course, the first question he asks is he wants to have, what do we have for a site survey? I sent him what we had surveyed for our current facility project and he would like to see the entire site be surveyed. So I'm going to meet with this rep from this firm in the middle of September and we're going to talk a little bit about what this might look like. What I would like to do is I'd like to go ahead with getting the site survey completed. And I'm going to actually ask the same company that did the site survey for our facility, so they already have about two-thirds of the work done. I'm going to have them give us a proposal, but I'm going to ask them to do our entire site so then we have a site survey and we don't have to worry about getting another one done. I will not have him have the site be surveyed any further south as to where we get to our airport fly zone because the airport fly zone essentially prohibits us from constructing anything out there anyway. So I will limit where we go south, but I'm going to have the entire football field taken care of and all of that, so we will have all of it done. So the board can expect in September to get the pricing on that and I would ask the board to approve that so we could get the site survey stuff done yet before the weather gets too bad and then we can get planning on this softball piece. So remember now our long-term facility maintenance plan, we've got a couple of things that are coming up. Softball facility issue, we have $200,000 available coming up in LTFM that's been sitting there now for, ever since I've been here, so for close to three years where we've been putting that there. And then we also have a million dollars sitting there for our track that is going to need to be replaced as well. They're in different years. Softball comes up first and then I want to say it's softball in 2122 and then the track in 2223. But those two are both coming up. They're already on our long-term facility maintenance plan, but those are things that are, they're bigger projects that we need to start getting prepped to be able to have them move forward. So questions about that? It's very preliminary. This is step one to be able to get going on this. The intent is to get those softball fields flipped and then be able to have that kind of grandstand area, but also have it be multi-use, so it could be used for football, it could be used for track, it could be used for a whole host of seasons once it's constructed.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question about the south property?
Yep.
Is that literally not usable for anything but a field or can you have a track or something flat or parking?
So the restrictions is, and I would have to look as to how high in the air you can actually go.
Yeah.
I know that right now, the softball or the baseball field lights, if it were any further south, they would get far enough into that no-fly cone that those would not be permitted. I don't know off the top of my head though exactly how tall the structure piece is. And it's like.
Closer you get, the shorter you have to be.
Yeah, so there's an inner cone that is more restrictive and then there's a second tier that is a little less restrictive, but there's still restrictions. So there's like an A-zone and a B-zone is how they.
But I suppose a parking lot or a building or a field or anything is going to need lights that are going to be too tall.
I don't believe we can put a building in there that houses students or business people.
It's very specific, but Ron Mergon at the City of Painesville can get you the map.
I have the map.
Oh, because it's as clear as day on the map, exactly what you can do.
Yeah.
It's just when you don't have it in front of you, you don't know where it is. But the map has been there for, ever since the airport was built, but it's very, very clear what you can do.
And there is a height restriction, so I do believe you could put some stuff on it. It's just, it's very limited.
Right. And I'm sure people have thought of it, it's just I didn't know it and so I'm guessing a lot of other people don't realize because they ask all the time, why don't they build that way?
Right.
Again, just mentioning, it's just not an option.
Right.
Yeah.
The major restriction is going to be quite a ways south.
Yeah.
So you've got, I'm getting, it's been a while since I saw the map, but I think a fair amount of what we have in the parking lot on the south side, there's some flexibility that you could do there. But beyond that, because they kind of got to get around Teles anyway, right? So that's kind of where most of the restriction is going to take place, is quite a bit south.
Yeah.
And then height restriction, just like Matt's talking about.
I have a question about the softball field remodel. Do you envision that there's going to be a committee for that or how does that work? Being it's a smaller project, what is the involvement of the board? Is that mostly the AD and the coaches or how does?
No, I mean, I think we can, we can, we can look at how we want that structure to be. I think, excuse me, I think the bigger piece to it is I am going to be relying heavily on a lot of donated local help with that. The people that I have talked to and I found it a little tricky to get people that really are into and kind of understand the development of the athletic complex, I thought there'd be a lot more that would be out there. It's been a little tricky and then when I explain to them, I'm not looking for somebody to come in and run the whole project. I want somebody to get us the groundwork and to get us structurally located correctly and give us a good foundation and then I want us to be able to run with it locally. And so that's also been a little tricky because then some people are like, well, I'm not necessarily interested in that. So I have a person who is very interested. They have, they've done a lot of work with Hopkins School District and recommissioning and remodeling their athletic complex. And his firm is very willing to work with us to whatever extent they want them. We want them involved. They will obviously be full service and ready to help, but if they just want us to, if we just want them to do the planning and get us situated correctly and then we want to run with our, some local volunteer labor to do the work, they have expressed that absolutely we would, will step back whenever, whenever you want. So it's kind of trying to find a mix here that we can, can make work is really what it is.
Then we review upcoming meeting information, looking ahead to September, are there any upcoming meetings on the calendar?
I just have, we're going to add the transportation negotiations and then we just have the September work session and the September board meeting. And Maggie, do you remember off the top of your head, the West Central Ed, they meet in September, is it 21st?
In September. I just looked at it. September 14th.
Okay. They canceled our C meeting, didn't they? Yes, I believe they did. I haven't seen anything about it being rescheduled the other day.
Yeah, I haven't either, so.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Jake?
The board do now adjourn.
Okay, so motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
And a second from Thomas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no.